Good evening and welcome to this evening's Board of Ed meeting.
Jim Barrett.
Here.
Jerry Harker.
Here.
Val Close. Steve Lee.
Here.
Megan Michael.
Here.
Kathy Knight.
Here.
Han Upland.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, board members, any topics for consideration to add to the agenda this evening? You look for approval of the agenda?
Yes.
All right, can I say?
Yep.
Consent approved for the minutes of the June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one Board of Education meeting and the June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one Board of Education closed session meeting. Any issues with the minutes?
I need to accept minutes.
Second.
Second.
Jerry Harker.
Abstain.
Steve Lee.
Abstain.
Megan Michael.
Yes.
Kathy Knight.
Yes.
Jim Barrett.
Yes.
Han Upland.
Yes. All right, it's agenda time for citizens to speak. Any citizens like to speak?
I'm sure.
Gus, could you allow them at citizen's time to speak?
It's citizen's time to speak, so I guess you all are assigned in first if you want to go or whichever order, if you want to speak and haven't signed in, you can sign in here.
Good evening, board members. My name is Alicia Shebo, I teach at the high school, we're here with people and children. Yeah, you guys can. First and foremost, I do want to make sure that I share my admission for all of you. The administration last year has been awful, so thank you for what we've been doing. I'm just here honestly to ask you to take into consideration what the new guidelines are. I know you've all been busy speaking to each other, I'm sure, since Friday, since the new guidelines have come out. But I just wanted to speak as a staff member to share my point of view. The new CDC guidelines are asking, as you know, to have the vaccinated mask and the unvaccinated, or the vaccinated not mask and the unvaccinated mask. In my personal belief, that that would be discrimination and that would be sharing everyone's private health choice, that it's a personal choice whether to get the vaccine or not. And in doing so, would be segregating everyone into two different groups, and I feel that that would actually be sharing personal information without actually sharing personal information. As far as masks go, if you, I think many of you know, but if you don't, I would love to sit when I'm on with you. I have plenty of studies that can show you, especially for children, the ineffectiveness of masks, the dangerousness of masks, the CO2 levels that occur when one wears a mask just gets higher and higher the younger you get, so all of our little ones have a dangerously high CO2 level when they're behind a mask all day. The masks are brooding grounds for other bacteria, aside, so we're all worried about COVID, but there's things like sepsis and, gosh, how does that have to study? I'd love to show you if you want to know of it, but these masks are actually causing a whole lot of harm, even psychological harm. As a staff member, last year was awful. It was absolutely awful. I didn't, it was a really hard year. And for those of you that are parents in this district, I know that you can only understand the frustration that your children had this last year. It was terrible. I know how it was when it turned to normal, whatever that was. Teaching behind a mask, so myself being masked and teaching to children who were masked was really hard. I couldn't hear them very well, they couldn't hear me, I had to shout. I got home and I had headaches every day just from trying to shout really loud through the mask. So I'm just informing you, my main point is to make masks optional. I have a list of districts in the state that have already made it optional. I know that there's a fear from the Illinois State Board of Education of putting schools on probation. I know one of those schools, our school, my school was Red Hill, but I do know that the state has canceled their meeting, their probation meeting, and they have not followed through with that yet. There are plenty of schools that have done that. So my last point is, I don't even know what quarantine is going to look like. We had remote learning last year, and it's not an option this year unless you are medically homebound for the whole year. So if someone comes in contact with it, or someone tests positive, that's quarantine for two weeks. Honestly, as a staff member, I'm scared of what I have to do in order to reach my kid, my student, that is. I'm not having a textbook, I don't understand my kids home with busy work. They need to hear me in order to acquire the language, believe that I'm a Spanish teacher. They're going to lose out on two weeks. I'm really honestly worried about that. I'm worried about what the pressure for the teachers is going to be, and I'm worried about what the pressure of the parents is going to be. They're going to have to stay home with their kids, especially with little ones. I'm not saying that you're making one decision or the other, I'm just asking you to make masks optional. And this, and all the reasons that I listed is why. I think I have one more point, let me just double check if you don't mind. Okay, I'll end here, there's plenty of people that want to speak. So if you have any questions again about studies that have been done, I have a lot of evidence and proof, and I'd love to share them with you if you, if you're interested. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we are the next speaker, I just want to, just so we have a lot of people that do want to speak, and we do limit the time, so please keep it within five minutes, so those who do want to talk will have their opportunity to speak as well, okay? Also, we have an interest in those to. Yes. And so please introduce yourself, and then we may know if you've signed in. So we have that on record.
Thank you. My name is Sean Walker.
My name is Lucas Olmos, we're going to eighth grade this year. Let's turn to scientific facts and real feelings. A number of randomized controlled trials, RCTs, were conducted in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, two thousand twelve, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, two thousand nineteen, and two thousand twenty regarding N-95 and cloth masks. All studies found that there is no significant difference, significant difference between wearing either mask preventing viral transmission. They did find that cloth masks pose a threat that could result in increased risk of infection. In addition, wearing a mask can increase or create health issues. Oxygen can be reduced by as much as 20%. Wearing a mask and within seconds can result in headaches, dizziness, nausea, and within hours abuse can result in loss of consciousness, just because you may feel okay, it doesn't mean everyone else does. This past year has proven you are disregarding science and saying that any mask is better than nothing. This instills fear in the children and is a myth. And no, they are not resilient to that. Disposable surgery, surgical masks are made of synthetic fibers that enter into the lung tissue and have been proven to cause issues such as chronic asthma, bronchitis, pneumonia, or worse. Since masked individuals have a greater inspiratory flow than unmasked individuals, all of these issues and more are a great risk. Surgical masks, which are most commonly used and are intended to be used by medical professionals to protect against contamination of patient lungs and protect the wear of his body or bodily fluids. Such as, such professionals are trying to never touch any part of the mask, otherwise it might, must be replaced. Unfortunately, it is safe to say that all children touched their mask, therefore resulting in misuse. Further, the COVID-19 particle size, point one twenty-five micron, to relate, this is four thousand times smaller than the area of human hair. Masks may block particles the size of three micron. This is like using a chain link fence to stop sand. Masking the children has physical side effects, impair, it impairs facial recognition, it impairs verbal and nonverbal communication and blocks emotional signaling between student and teacher, all bonding and produced in the classroom, including amongst classmates. The full psychological, full psychological and educational effects have never been determined because we have never abused our children at the educational, at the educational level that we are at today. In April of two thousand twenty, the WHO said that there was no need for healthy people to wear a mask. It's days after the CDC had told people they needed to wear one. Next up, Hawkeye Candace Owens. Candace Owens says, who remembers again, Simon says, who is Simon? Simon is Hawkeye. Simon said the beginning of two thousand twenty, Simon said in the beginning of two thousand twenty, masks are not effective against spread of virus. When he stated, we must wear one, when he stated, then he stated, we must wear two masks. First, it was six foot social distancing, then it was three foot social distancing. There was never any real research to back any of that up. Then in May two thousand twenty, Hawkeye said he wore a mask as a symbol of good behavior. Then again, as Simon says, and we've been through. Hawkeye's emails prove it all. I can share the link with you via email if you'd like to review them. Recent CDC randomized control trials concluded that masks did not have any effect on transmission. The WHO reported in nineteen twenty, two thousand nineteen, that masks showed no evidence of reducing transmission. So how did we get where we are today? PCR, they don't work. And when tested at thirty-seven to forty cycles, they yielded eighty-five to ninety percent. First, we were told we needed to get the jab to be protected. Then we were told, actually, the jab doesn't offer protection, but it would give us more freedom. I thought we were Americans, we already have our freedoms. What do we need to get, need the jab for? We have the Constitution.
Worse yet, vaccines are not lawful permitted. Oh, do I speak now?
Yes.
All righty. Worse yet, vaccines are not lawful permitted, and there are known critical therapeutics. These included Busnide, HCQ, Lerm, Victin, Vitamin D, and more. They have existed for COVID viruses and other, or dec, and others for decades, and specifically approved by the WHO, CDC, and HI, NIH websites since two thousand five. They removed in two thousand twenty. Death rates, the CDC implets the death rates and later admits that ninety-four percent of the deaths underlying conditions and that they combined her immunization, influenza, and COVID-19 into one, calling it P I C. Did you know that hospitals are paid thirteen thousand dollars for every COVID-19 mission and thirty-nine thousand for every patient that is put on a ventilator? Sure seems like bribery. EUA, emergency use authorization mandates. These violate all ten of the new number, Merber codes, which are punishable by death. This is not ignored as thousands of doctors and scientists worldwide have an active lawsuit naming Fosse and CDC, WHO, and others. This is only the beginning. Survival rate, COVID-19 has over ninety-five percent survival rate for ages, for all ages, with the major majority of the population at over ninety-nine percent. We're all, we are victims of fear, modern, and religion. I, I'm outraged because it seems as though your fear of a particular less than one micron is greater than your desire to protect and support our children. Let me repeat it. It seem, seems your fear is greater than your desire to protect and support. Beed, beed by example, and join fellow schools in Illinois across the state line that have ma, made masks learning optional for the, are very same, etc. We are taxpaying citizens. We are parents protecting the law with rights and liberties of, for our children. We pro, protect by HIPP and ADA laws. We are protected by our rights and to religious and medical exemption. And we, and we are supposed to be protected by our rights in the Constitution of the United States. Our children need to be protected by you and the schools in which we send them to, for, to, for, in education, not a lessons on behavior or compliance. And to wear masks so that they mind to wash their hands before touching their face. Our children's future is too far important for us to stand down. There is no limit as how far, to how far we will go. We, we will continue to present facts and over fiction, continue to pressure and act of the difference. We believe you know what to do. Now is your time to be the difference for our children, the threat of America. Make masks optional.
Any other citizens like to speak?
I would like to speak. So good evening, members of the board. My name is Cassandra Torstensen, I did prepare something, so I could try to be quick. My name is Cassandra Torstensen, and I am a Johnford graduate and a mother of four Johnford students. Today, I'm here to speak about the return to school, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, and I'd like to speak about three things, keeping masks, keeping schools open to in-person learning, optional masks, and no hybrid vaccinated versus unvaccinated discrimination of students or faculty. I hold a bachelor of science degree and completed coursework to be pre-med, as well as hold an environmental science degree. I also hold a master's degree in public administration. Over the past twenty years, I've worked as a scientist and as a manager and executive in government at multiple levels, including working for the North Dakota governor as his sole scientific policy advisor. I highlight this role because I've been directly involved in drafting legislation, amending legislation, and turning bills into law. As a school board, you are locally elected by the residents of Johnford to serve the best interests of the students and the future generations of Johnford. It is my hope that through my presentation, I can remind you of who holds the power to make decisions for our children with respect to in-person learning, masking, and vaccination. It is you, not the state, not IDPH, and not ISBE. So funding, it is my understanding that the state has threatened schools across Illinois, including Johnford, with their funding if they do not comply with their recommendations and guidance. However, the state does not hold your funding, the legislature does, as outlined in Illinois law, one oh five ILCS five slash eighteen dash eight point one five. Therefore, ISBE and IDPH cannot cut funding related to compliance to Health Department or CDC recommendations without change by the legislature to the funding formula as set in statute. Additionally, I'm sure you've all heard about what happened to Red Hill School as referenced earlier. They had a recommended mask policy that was contrary to mandatory universal masking in schools, as outlined. Therefore, ISBE cited that same law of this Illinois school code and threatened sanctions against this school and indicated that they could be put on probation or shut them down if they did not comply. However, it is clear that the legislative branch of government has actually never given ISBE such authority, as evidenced by the fact that the legislature tried to pass House Bill twenty-seven eighty-nine during the two thousand twenty-one spring legislative session. This bill failed. The State Board of Education still does not have the authority to revoke recognition for schools that fail to comply with public health requirements issued by IDPH when a public health emergency is declared by the governor. It cannot prohibit a school board from passing any resolution that is a contraintervention of any requirement established by the Illinois Department of Public Health during a public health emergency. Three, they cannot require a school to comply with all public health requirements issued by the Illinois Department of Public Health during a declared public health emergency. And most importantly, the state's superintendent of education does not have the authority to require a school to operate fully remotely if the public health requirements are not met. The same school that, Red Hill, has since made the decision to remain masks optional for this coming school year, and ISBE has said nothing about their decision for the next school year, and they have dropped their case from, from what I know at this moment in time. Guidelines and recommendations are only that, and schools cannot be punished for not following guidelines and recommendations, nor can they have their funding pulled just because they aren't requiring the students or faculty to follow recommendations and guidelines that the state and the ISBE and the IDPH does not have the authority to implement and enforce. So simply stated, ISBE does not have the authority to threaten schools or sanctions against them, and it is your local decision to make. How do I know this? Because the Illinois legislature holds ISBE that standards for schools, one oh five ILCS five dash two point three two five. In addition, standards of Title twenty-three, Section one point two oh of the Administrative Code must be met. If a standard is not written in Title twenty-three, it is not an administrative rule. Masks are not rules in Title twenty-three. This is what you were elected to do, to make local decisions, to do what is best for our children. I'm going to spare you from reading a lot of the other stuff I have, but I will leave you a copy of it tonight. I wrote about the Healthcare Right of Consciousness Act, which is also a citation, seven forty-five ILCS seventy, Section five. This says you can't discriminate people, from, against people. The CDC guidance was all guidance. From the CDC guidance, there's a lot of different things in it, you're going to get copies of it, but it'll all recommendations nowhere in it does it say required. Governor Pritzker has also acknowledged that, expressly stated that the CDC guidance said with the use of the word should, right from his Facebook post, unvaccinated people should keep wearing a mask, schools should follow distancing testing, ventilation, and hand washing practices to keep kids safe. Should is not must, and should is optional. Look around the United States. Many states have been back in school since the beginning of last year. Some states never required masks or shutdown, like South Dakota. And at least eight states, eight states have now banned local school districts from instituting a mask mandate, such as Utah, Arizona, Texas, Oklahoma, Arkansas, Iowa, Vermont, and South Carolina. And over a dozen school districts in Illinois that I was able to count so far have already said masks are optional. Just north of our border, Genoa City, Wisconsin, schools have optional masks. Their school board voted to make all masks voluntary for all staff and students, no vaccination card or proof required, and they were open the entire school year last year, the entire year. So why, just a few miles south, are we so different? Less than fifteen miles south, but we were closed for half the year, and you're going to potentially require masks. I demand that our children are in school full-time, every single day, this entire next school year, and with masks optional. Additionally, no hybrid requirements for masks. Requiring unvaccinated to mask is segregation and discriminatory, and it can also lead to harassment and bullying. Local school districts are in control, not the state, not the federal government. You, the local school board, have the power and the right to make the decision to stay open and to be masked optional. My children will be returning to school this fall in person, and in my preference, it would be mask-free. I will be sending them without a mask, and they will not consent to wearing a mask because by the state law and constitution, they are protected from any discrimination. Additionally, every child is entitled to an atmosphere conducive to learning, and they cannot be discriminated against for that. Additionally, in the United States, under the Constitution, all children are entitled to the right to an education. If you send my children home, then you will also provide a tutor for my children and any other child you send home. I am a single working professional mom of four. I have no way to elearn them. I cannot do it. You will have to teach them. Lastly, on the vaccine, all COVID vaccines are still considered emergency use authorized. By consenting to get this vaccine, you're also acknowledging that you are a trial participant as long as safety data is not yet known. These vaccines do cause medical issues, cardiac issues, and death. The long-term impacts on human reproduction are also not well-known. However, they do know that the spike protein is nearly identical to the outer layer of a woman's placenta. And if you have been vaccinated, there is a chance that the spike protein from the vaccine will render a woman infertile. But it's too soon to tell for sure if that's actually going to happen. But they do have evidence that they're nearly as same. Not to mention, the miscarriage rate is up four thousand percent currently over pre-COVID. So to all the parents, anytime in life a public official tells you something can be, should be, or must be, or can't be done, please ask them to show you the law and where it is written. The way our system of government works is it must be written. Fear is no excuse not to understand and follow our system of government. As for present-day issues, if legal liability is truly a risk for not following IDPH guidance by a local school district, please ask them to show you where in the Illinois school code and or Title twenty-three of the Administrative Code or anywhere else in the law where this is written. If funding or recognition status is at risk, ask them the exact same question. You need to literally ask them and print it off and underline it for you. If at the end of the day, your school district, no offense, I respect all of you, but if you're just scared to make the decisions, what's best for our kids, then ask again. Where is it in writing? To my school board, I implore you to do what is right for the students of Johnford. Recognize that you answered with the voters of your district. You are professionally obliged to represent the majority will of your constituents. School boards do not have any right to implement inappropriate owners with undeterminical policies, such as mask mandates, over the will of your constituents, even if those policies were mandated. Bringing our kids back to school one hundred percent full-time, make masks optional, and do not implement any hybrid vaccinated versus unvaccinated rules. Our children need to be heard, seen, and allowed to learn in person, all day, mask-free. And as the state of Illinois, IDPH, and ISBE, get your hands out of local business where it doesn't belong. Leave our children and our schools alone. Stop threatening our school boards with their funding, their recognition, their ability to remain open, and stop threatening to close them down when they do not comply with orders that you do not have the authority to mandate. Sincerely, Cassandra Torstensen, mother of four public school children, resident of Johnford, graduate of Johnford District Public School, and I have also enrolled multiple degrees. Thank you.
Any other citizens like to speak?
I also want to speak. I'll go. Gus Schmidt, Benny O. I wanted to start out this evening by thanking the junior high and district administration, as well as the board for their continued support of the Johnford Outdoor Club. Johnford teacher, former teacher and resident, Mr. Dave Ruby, started the jock club forty-seven years ago. Maybe the longest-running club here, not sure, but forty-seven years. He started it with a trip to the current river in Missouri, Dominio's Arts. Several years ago, Mr. Ruby passed the baton to Mrs. Heller, who has continued the program for our children. Activities that Aaron has done include kayaking, archery, and continuing the current river canoe trip. I have been incredibly fortunate to have chappelled in four of the last five trips, four trips out of the last five years, and it's amazing to see the students come back with a new maturity and life lessons that they get from that trip. I feel that it is extracurricular groups and activities such as a jock club, drama club, that impact our children more than almost anything else. I look forward to seeing the program have continued support and be encouraged to continue to grow. What Aaron does for that group is amazing, so make sure you tell her if you see her. I think there's enough people here talking about things. I pretty much echo what everybody here has said so far. I will say that my biggest concern is for our students' mental health. My daughter is concerned about how she will be looked at because I will not let her get the vaccine. I do not believe in the vaccine for anybody under fifty. That's my personal opinion. If it's good for you, great, I'm happy for you. When you look at the numbers for McHenry County, and I'll just throw out some of these, four percent, four point six percent of our cases made up fifty-six percent of the deaths. That was from long-term care facilities, okay? Another statistic, eighteen percent of the cases, which were sixteen older, so people sixteen over, are eighteen percent of our cases in McHenry County. Eighty-seven to ninety-five percent of the deaths are in that age group. Our children are not the problem. Our children do not deserve to go through another shitty year and wear masks. And I'm asking you guys, I know it's tough. And I'm asking you guys, I know it's tough, I've been there, I have supported you guys, and I have also said that I would not want to be in your seats. So I acknowledge that. But we need to get back to normal. Not only normal, we need to get back to normal. My kids in the drama club, last year, they did their best, they put their hearts into what they could do. It's not acceptable to me. They need to be on that stage afterward, doing what they do, running the lights, running sound, and not behind a mask and not being sent home. And you guys know it, and you support, and it was in your letter, the fact that all of these people that were sent home due to contact tracing, I believe it was zero, maybe for our school or for the county, that actually came back and tested positive for COVID. Our kids are not the problem. Let's get back to school.
Any other citizens like to address the board?
I'll go. My name is Pam Jesuit. I've got three kids in the district, and I'm also a bus driver with the district. I did not come with a prepared statement, this is kind of a last-minute decision here. Well, I didn't prepare anything because there's nothing I could have said or prepared that you haven't heard already. 100%, I agree with everything that's just said. So my main point is, please, make masks optional. That's it. There's no reason for them, I don't see a reason for them. I'm sure you guys have done the research, you've read everything you can, you're going to continue to be flooded with more information than I'm sure you'll read and take into consideration. So I'm just here to voice my opinion, to please make masks optional.
Any other citizens like to?
Thank you guys for helping with all of this and having to make these tough decisions because they're not easy. I know you got people pulling from all different directions, but...
Do you want us to know who you are, please, for the record?
I'm Gary Raybiden.
And did you sign in?
I did sign in.
Thank you, Mr. Raybiden.
So I've been communicating with the frontline doctors since March of 2020, and a group of thousands of doctors now across the globe. And so I continue to get information on a weekly, monthly basis. And here's a result, and a lot of this has been said, and I appreciate it because these young kids, they're on top of this, it's amazing listening to them find out this information. But the virus is not contained by non-surgical, non-standard masks. It's proven, children are not spreaders. Children can be physically harmed by wearing masks. Children are socially stunted by wearing a mask. Adults can get vaccinated, protect themselves in schools, they have that ability. Parents concerned about COVID can decide to mask their children without requirement, any requirement at all, right? Majority of states have made masks optional, including New York, made it optional. The shutdown of our schools was a huge overreaction and stunted our children's personal and academic growth. Bureaucrats shouldn't make decisions on our children's health. Speak up now. I'm working every day to become the governor of our once-great state. I'm confident we are in a war against our families. Our families are burdened with the highest tax in America. Our families are burdened with the dismantling of our police. Our families are burdened with forced sex education in our grade schools. This school board has a chance to lead in this decision instead of follow. When I win, serving our families will be my focus, and forced masking will not be an option in Illinois.
Any other citizens like to address the board?
I hope that's okay.
We will need you to sign in for record.
Okay, I will sign in afterwards. Thank you. I am obviously the anomaly here. I would like to thank the board for taking this pandemic seriously.
Can you tell us your name, please?
My name is Lindsay.
Thank you.
I would like to thank the board for continuing to take this seriously. My two young children were home for most of last year and didn't go back until the end of March, and it was a very, very difficult and challenging decision, and they did fine going back with masks. I have a close family member who's a biochemical engineer and worked closely with the coronavirus every single day since the beginning of this pandemic, and has assured me that masks do work and they are necessary to keep this from spreading. He was right, the problem is not the kids, it's their parents. We need to do what's best for our kids. It's not fun to wear a mask, no one wants to, it's hard for our kids, it's really challenging. But what's harder is watching our grandparents die. What's harder is them losing someone, having immunocompromised family members who can't get the vaccine, or children like mine who are not old enough to get the vaccine, and bringing those germs home to their family members that they love. I know that this is a very divisive issue, and I thank you very much for following the science and trying to do what's best for our children. I'm seeing certain things happening with all of you.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
My name is Jeff Christian. I have a son and a daughter, Carter and Grace. I'm not going to kill you with a bunch of... I've read a lot, I have... There's a lot of information out there on the side of my head, but through all of this, as the data has kind of emerged, there's a number that sticks in my head, and that's the infection retaliation rate for children. It's .003, according to the CDC. We're talking about .003, 3,000ths of a percent. They are not the drivers of this pandemic, this sickness. You know, we can find research papers that prove that they're not the super spreaders, that they were first sold. So the number in my head that sticks out is .03, or 003. They are not at risk. The masks, I can't bear to see my kids in them anymore. I'm done. Okay? And I'm not here to tell other parents what to do with their children. That is their right, it's their responsibility. And if a parent feels that they need to mask their children, please, by all means, vaccination, same. I'm not here to preach to anyone whether they should vax or not vax. It is your family's decision, I respect that 100%. We have sat here and we have waited patiently and, you know, I'm done. .003%, they are not at risk. I'm asking petitioning for the option to choose what's best for my children. That's all I want. Thank you very much.
Would any other citizens like to address the board?
My name is Nick Willis. I also have on record stating that I think the mask should be optional for the children and the parents to make the decision on whatever they want to do. It shouldn't be up to any person or any other higher-up to state whether my children come to school with or without a mask, so I just want to state that I believe it should be optional as well.
Anyone else?
I did sign in. Hillary, Ronne Hillary. Young lady over here is my daughter Cassandra. I echo everything she said. I'm a graduate of Johnsburg Schools. My children are grandchildren of Johnsburg Schools. I have nine grandchildren attending Johnsburg Schools. I urge you to do the right thing. Masks, they're all wearing them, you have to, or it's almost making you do it, or shaming you into it. Don't let that get to you. It's a way of stealing our identity. It's just not right. That's the reality. I have to say, oh, she's going to give you a handout of what she wrote. I heard you all read it.
Anyone else like to address the board?
I feel like I have to say, I'm Sandy Gill. I guess I just want to know at what point, if they do become mandatory, at what point will they become optional? When are we going to take away the mask from the school? The same kids that have the mask on all day are allowed to take them off to eat their snacks at the same desk, they're sitting right next to their friend. Doesn't make sense to me. The same kids that are wearing masks are going outside and playing on the playground with all the kids, very close. They're touching the gym equipment that's not even sanitized between the classes. They're using sinks that don't even work in Rainwood. They spray out a little bit of water, I mean, they're not... You know, so I guess I'm just wondering if they are mandatory, at what point are we going to take them off? Are you going to say once the kids are vaccinated, you know, you're going to have half the kids wearing masks, half the kids? I think that'll be more problematic later on, you know? So I think as a parent, I just want to know when we're going to pull the mask away, when will it be optional?
Would anyone else like to address the board?
Hi, my name is Maritza Hernandez. I'm actually new to Johnsburg, I've only been here maybe 10 months. And the little that I have seen, I have seen amazing things happen within the district that I didn't see in the city. I do agree with 100% of these parents, it is optional, it should be optional, okay? We're all adults here, the majority of us, but I'm going to be honest. Seat belts are required, but do people wear them? They're going to save our lives, right? Do we wear them? 99.9% of them say yeah. But there is that percent that don't wear them, and they die. Well, he should have wore a seat belt. Well, he should have worn a mask, he would have been protected from the coronavirus. No, it's not guaranteed. None of this is guaranteed. There's all these cures for cancer, AIDS, dementia, none of that is guaranteed, okay? Our children, I have a three-year-old who's about to start. It's a fighting battle trying to get him into the store to wear a mask. He's three years old. It's sad. We've only known this mask for what, a year? But this is all he knows his whole life. How is that fair? How is that normal? It's not, and I feel that that should be optional, just like somebody should be telling you how to raise your kids. You don't want mom, grandma, anybody telling you how to raise your kids. We shouldn't have to have the state telling us what to do with our kids. I'm sorry, last time, I pushed my child out. Let's be realistic here, you know? Condoms should be used to prevent, you know, sexually transmitted diseases. People use it optionally. So masks should be optional. If you want it, cool. If you don't want it, cool. You want the vaccine, for all means, take all the vaccines if you want. If you don't want it, step away. Do not criticize if they want to use a mask, and if they don't want to use a mask. Like, it's just, there's too many pointing fingers, and people need to stop. If they're 10, you point, you got 3 pointing right back at you. It needs to stop. I think we should have that option as parents. As a community, we should come together instead of, oh, she's wearing a mask, oh, yeah, that's not cool. No, we're human, we're all one person. Rip us all inside out, we're all the same, you're not going to know who I am. And it's kind of awkward because I am the only tentative person as my neighbors call it, right? But like, let's be realistic. Everybody is the same, we all be the same, let's all have that same right.
Hello, my name is Julie Anderson, and I believe that I know a lot of you in this room. And as you know, I have two sons that went through the whole system in Johnsburg, and I have six wonderful grandchildren that have gone through the system. And I have always respected and stood up for the Johnsburg community. Johnsburg has been an awesome system for all the years for our families. And my point for this whole thing is, I think that it should be choice. I don't think there's any proof to show that the children should be forced to wear masks. I think the proof is more, that it is more harmful than it is good. My husband and I both had COVID. We're over 70 years old. My husband has pretty major underlying conditions, and his was treated conventionally. And he didn't have to go to the hospital, he was very sick. I was very sick. And we pulled through it, which is not saying that's for everyone. But what I'm saying is that I think it should be choice. And I believe that all of you have good common sense, most of you have been here a long time, and that I hope that you feel that choice should be the whole basis for your decision. It should be choice. Thank you for your time.
Would anyone else like to address the board?
My name is Tammy, and we moved to Johnsburg about three years ago. And we moved to Johnsburg specifically because if you talk to anybody in McHenry County, they will say Johnsburg has the best schools, so go there. We overpaid on our house because we can walk to the school, and I'm like, I want that house because we can walk here to Johnsburg Schools, and it was such a big deal for us. We've loved this district, we've loved everything about it. Last year, during e-learning, we had to pull our kids from the e-learning process because it was not working for them, into a private school option, which is never in our plans, which is not what we really like to be doing. We gave my daughter sixth grade the option if she wanted to continue that route or come back to Johnsburg Schools with the mask and everything, and she did, but it is really, really difficult in the fact that at 12 years old, she has to make that decision. It's heartbreaking. And I don't know, board members, how you feel, which side you lean on, I just really hope that you know, this is just a small representation of the people in our community that feel this way. And I'm just thankful for everybody that is showing up and speaking up, and hopefully you guys will just be able to know that there are people that feel that masks should be optional and take it into consideration for the school year.
Would anyone else like to address the board? Well, we thank all of you. I will just speak for myself. I don't think it's an easy thing to get up and speak in front of a bunch of people, and you guys did, and your voices have been listened to. And here's the socialize teach me, isn't this great? We have this thing called the First Amendment, and we're all exercising it, utilizing it, making our voices heard, so thank you all for doing that. We will now move on to acting on the bills. If you want to leave, you're welcome to, this isn't very exciting, going over bills and paying for them, but you're welcome to stick around. Thank you for coming, yes. Annie and the bills.
Okay. Including your packet is a summary of all the bills, including your comparable and peer liabilities. We're requesting give people $2.8 million, and that is primarily due to the large amount that we've paid out in July for all our subscriptions, our insurance renewal, et cetera, as well as the closing of our June 30th. We are finalizing construction progress and things of that nature, as well as our summer payroll for teaching for the TRS payment. Included in the summary, you'll notice that we're paying our six liability insurance, which is about $342,000, as well as the payment for the roof, which isn't completed, but we wanted to include that in our FY '21 fiscal year, so it's going to be in time, we will be holding that until it's finalized.
So that means we cut the check for this one?
Correct, yep.
Thank you.
That's all that I have to cover.
Did we have any questions for Annie? Would we like to pay them? Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second. Teyfling?
Yes.
Megan Michael?
Yes.
Kathy Nice?
Yes.
Jen Barrett?
Yes.
Jerry Harper?
Yes.
Tom McLean?
Yes. All about the information items. First, we have the COVID-19 update. This is a little different than what it was a few days ago.
This is a little different than what it was a few days ago. And just for anybody in the room, because there's not an action item, it's a rental board, there's nothing else, it's an action item, it's just gonna be informational, kind of where things are at as of, what table's up as of, as of today, and kind of plans moving forward, so meetings, I should say, moving forward. So I did put a...
Dan, real quick, would you, like, I feel like it would be beneficial to maybe let people know out and back, because this is such a hot topic, and maybe they should pay attention to this portion. I mean, obviously, they're free to pay attention, but I really feel like this might be helpful for a lot of people, too, that came here to hear this topic.
Yeah, I don't think it's on.
Yeah, I don't think it's on now, but...
No, I can hear it.
Yeah, okay.
So just as a reminder, this is not an action item, so there's nothing actionable that's happening tonight. It's just more informational items, informational update for the board. A lot more information is coming, so the current plans, like we've talked about, is going to be to return to the pre-pandemic school day schedules and all the building for the '21, '22 school year, so we'll go back to the original schedules. Friday, we sent some communications out in regards to please contacting people so we can get some, some information and some guidance. And I'll be honest, I think the guidance came from the CDC on Friday afternoon. We had been told for a long time that it's gonna take a week or two after that to be able to get any guidance, IDPH or ISBE. Well, was it then a couple hours? Next thing we know, we got IDPH just saying, yep, we're gonna do this. And then a short time after that, we got ISBE providing us an email with kind of conflicting information to schools in regards to things. They did provide an updated clarification on Saturday afternoon, but I'm not so sure ISBE was ready for the IDPH to be able to move that past. It certainly didn't seem that way. The reason being is, whenever anything like that had happened in the past, in the pandemic, we had had either a webinar or a conference with the State Board of Education or whomever within a day or day and a half. And to this day, we still haven't had any communication yet back from the State Board, so... So basically, and I think a lot of people already know this anyway, but the main point is full in-person learning, with an emphasis on layered mitigation strategies, because we're supposed to, you know, continue to work with the local health department, so I'll get to that in just a second. Masks, as all know, should, and all the word required, anywhere in that, be worn by all unvaccinated individuals. Social distancing is at three feet. There's other important things that we're looking, that are recommended in the guidance as well in regards to hand washing, school ventilation, cleaning, disinfecting. A big one is to stay at home when you're sick. And then there's some information about, I can't stress it enough, voluntary screening that we're gonna be looking into with the University of Illinois. But I can't stress the term voluntary enough. That helps to monitor the situation. So we're trying to get some information with that. So where are things at right now? We haven't even had an opportunity to be able to talk with the McHenry County Health Department as of yet, and they have not, I haven't seen anything provided, any information out yet. We have a meeting scheduled at this week. I also have a meeting scheduled with other superintendences in the county this week and other organizations this week. But at this point, right now, we're still, nothing, no further information has come from ISBE, IDPH. Now, I did learn this afternoon about four that there's supposedly a quote-unquote FAQ coming out to be able to clean some of this up tomorrow afternoon. But we haven't, we haven't seen anything. There's a lot, there's a lot of confusion in regards to that. So what are we waiting on? We're waiting on cafeteria is our big issue. We've talked about that here for a long time in regards to spacing and eating and that type of stuff, and how to be able to fit kids where they, where they, where they're at. Transportation is another big issue. How many on a bus? seating assignments, masking, not masking, that type of stuff. I think Alicia was here just a little bit ago, I'm not sure she's still here, but remote learning, there's a lot of questions in regards to that. Just so everybody knows, remote learning's not an option for people to be able to have anymore. That's going on off the table. So remote learning is only available now if you're in quarantine, so... But there's a lot of, what does that mean in regards to quarantine, isolation, vaccinated, unvaccinated, those tests, those... So there's a lot of question marks out there right now that we're waiting for. So we're anticipating some webinars, we're anticipating some FAQs from ISBE. I just want to talk to you guys. I get it. I know where you're at. I think I know a lot of you. We're gonna get information to you as soon as we possibly can.
I'm not getting the information. It's probably making a difference.
Right, right, we're gonna do that, so I'm just...
And all you've done is spew everything that Illinois has told you to do. Every email you sent.
Understood.
And I'm sorry that I'm speaking to you now, but you let people talk without regard or answer to what your thoughts were. And as everyone spoke here tonight, everybody, every person in this room, with the exception of you, may I kind of had listened. You might have heard, but you didn't listen to these people. You're following those rules, just concerned about that seat. That's all. That's what I see.
Thank you.
Could you have a question about the quarantine and the e-learning option? Early in June, or maybe it was late May, the state had sent something, and I saw it from you guys as well, that said that if the child was eligible for the vaccine but did not receive the vaccine, they would also not be eligible for e-learning. Is that gone?
Yep.
Because that's discriminatory.
No, it's not.
Thank you.
So we'll get that information to everybody as soon as we possibly can.
Okay, we're gonna move forward this evening and talk about high taxes. You guys are, are welcome to stay or head out, I won't be offended. First thing we're gonna cover is our FY '20 budget versus actual on a cash basis. From July 1st of 2020 through June 30th of 2021, on a cash basis, you'll note that we increased our cash balance by about $3.3 million. That's due in part two. We received four mandated categoricals within the year. One was from FY '20 that was due for the prior year, three from FY '21. And just as of this last week, we received our fourth category on health for FY '21, which is well ahead of normal standard for the state force. In last year, our late 2019 taxes that were received after June 30th made up about $1.2 million of that cash balance that you see there that was really due for the prior year. You'll remember that the McHenry County had extended the due dates for taxes last year so that a lot of those tax things that we received in June didn't come until September. Also, you can see that we've done reduced spending due to the pandemic, and like I said, we had improved our cash position by about $3.3 million. On an accrual basis, balancing out the 2019 taxes and 2020 taxes, each to about 50%, we approved for the prior year audit items, approved for mandated categoricals and the ones that are still due to us, obviously, and the ones that we just received. We also have some outstanding ESSR funds, which is the careers funding. We received three different types of ESSR funding this year, of which we had due to us at the close of June 30th, about $280,000 due to us for that. Overall, netting to a $2.3 million increase to our fund balance, and ending our fund balance for all of our operating funds at about $8 million for this year. Moving forward to FY '22, our revenue assumptions are, property taxes are assumed at 1.4% CPI. That's based on the December 2020 CPI, which is what we use for calculations moving forward, $1 million in new growth, which we can assume might be a little bit higher than that with all the, what's been happening. 1% unreceived taxes, which fluctuates between a half percent or so. State funding held flat or estimated based on FY '21 spending. An example of that is transportation. Since we spent less in transportation this year, we'll receive less revenue in transportation for this next year. One of the items that we haven't received final information on yet is evidence-based funding. We do know we'll be receiving an increase there, but we don't know what that is yet. That'll be adjusted before, hopefully, we bring this back to you guys in August. Regular funding, federal funding, based on what we know for allocation or cut flat, and then increase of federal funding for the ESSR 2 and ESSR 3 allocations. We have a portion of ESSR 2 remaining to come in within this year, and that's primarily for technology and for some construction items for the HVAC project we're doing at Ringwood. And then ESSR 3, we know we're taking over three years, and that will be primarily for the staffing that we're allocating, so about a third of that for this year. For expenditures, we've assumed for all of the lane movements, new hires, retirees, wage increases, hiring of the Aitken staff, and budgeting for that HVAC project through ESSR funds, and also for two roof sections to be completed at JHS. So you'll notice that there's about a $500,000 capital outlay projection, including ESSR funds, looking forward for this next year. To finalize our calculations for the FY '22 budget, we still need to reconcile some of the insurance elections for next year, some special education, our outplacements for tech campus, as well as obviously, we're still waiting on some of the registration to come in, so we have our professional assignments to finalize as well. For FY '22, we are estimating across our operation, operating funds of $399,000 surplus. We have $325,000 in contingency, and as I mentioned, about a $500,000 capital outlay expense. If you remember, we are, we just rolled off the expense for the abatement payment, and so we are now looking to ramp up some of those projects, so that's why it's at a higher number this year, as well as the ESSR funding. Moving forward, the full budget and summary are included in your packet, and then tentative approval will be needed at our August 17 board meeting. We'll review some more in September, and the final presentation will be brought in, looked for approval at the September 28 board meeting for the budget. Do you have any questions?
What are we hearing about evidence-based funding?
Yeah, was it 300 million?
340, yep.
354?
Yep.
354 million, increase? Right, so we don't know what our portion will be yet, and it'll have to do with where we go for tier funding. We're assuming it still remains in tier two, although that's likely to potentially change pretty quick. We're pretty close to that bubble. For operations, just want to kind of talk about what's been going on this summer. If you recall, we rented that storage in order to remove the furniture during pandemic preparations. All of the furniture has been returned to all of the schools. The staff is in the process of reviewing what's been brought, and we've given them kind of till July 30th to make some decisions about what they do and don't want in their classrooms. Any of the hard furniture that's not going to be used, we're trying to put as much back in as we can. We want to get as normal as we possibly can. We're still holding back on some of the soft seating in terms of trying to maintain that frequency of social distancing at this time and sellers further recommendations or guidelines. And then any of the hard furniture that we won't be using will be stored at the farm. We do have storage out there. Any of the soft seating will be stored within the buildings just to maintain, make sure that they, it stays clean and everything. The Ringwood HVAC project, that one is late a little bit, and that's really just timing due to equipment lead times. As of now, they've started working on a split system of controls, the equipment on top of the roof, and really piecing the things together that are already there to build that, out that building automation system. What we're waiting on is the York rooftop equipment, the big tacky units. The good thing about that is, once we get them, it's kind of a plug-and-play. Bring them up there, and of course, we're gonna need a crane, but there is potential that it won't happen until after the school year has started, maybe as far as Columbus Day at this time. Soon as we get them, we want to get them in, but it will be a weekend install, and we have guarantees that it will not take up any of our parking spaces or anything over at Ringwood, nor will be done during the school day at all. For the JJHS roof project, the floor protection's been installed, getting ready and getting everything scheduled, and it's supposed to start the last week of July, and that'll be a pretty quick process. As part of our ESSR funding, since we did receive good pricing for our HVAC project through ESSR 2 funding, we were able to also do some work over in the nurses' office at Ringwood School. I don't know if you guys know or were aware, but we moved that nurses' office this past year due to just kind of trying to quarantine and things like that. We've ended up moving it back, and we've installed two doors in order to have a dual entryway as opposed to having to come through the office and out every time. Just a better utilization of that space, and with something that was allowable under those funds. So the two new doors have been installed, there's just some other additional work that has to be completed with that. The parking lot that's on schedule for this year, this summer, is a JHS parking lot for seal coating, striping, be completed later this month, and it really is continued upon weather. And then last item related to summer projects is our buses. As you know, we just finished the lease, our old lease. We've returned those buses, and we're bringing in the new buses, the new bluebird buses. We have almost all of them here, I think we have one full-size bus to go in, a couple of the small ones. After that, the new digital radios will be installed, and that's part of the contract work that we have with Central States. You'll see, you saw that, that was the purpose that we did at this meeting. And then we're working on the transportation repeater upgrades, and that should be finished soon along with the programming for the new buses, for the radios.
Now, is Mr. Schwartz happy with those radios?
Of course he is.
Okay.
Can you say it again? Yeah, they were getting, they were getting a little tough to hear, for sure. For personnel, the only item I wanted to mention, because I think it's important and it may affect the budget, we do have some funds earmarked within the budget because we're unclear as to how this is going to work out this year. If you recall, last year, there's some changes to unemployment through IDES. Prinsker signed the House Bill 2643 into law, Public Act 102, Def 0026, on June 25th, and it extended the support staff unemployment benefits that were supposed to expire as of January 1st of '21. And it's extended it now through September 4th of '21, which means that any of our support staff, meaning custodians, teachers assistants, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, security staff, and clerical workers who do not work within the summer months, can now file for unemployment again for this year like they were able to last year. What we do not know, I'll mention that, does not apply to teachers or professional staff, principals, or anybody else who doesn't work both the summer, who is considered to be administrative or instructional. The one thing we're not clear about is whether or not we will be reimbursed like we were in the past. So using federal funding, the state was able to reimburse us for those unemployment expenditures last year and through JHRS, but this time, we haven't gotten that verification on whether that's the case. So right now, we have funds earmarked in the budget. If that changes, we will obviously take that out.
Do we have people doing that?
Yes, we do. So, but I typically, the way it works, it's usually almost two quarters later before I figure out what those final costs were, just so you know. So it's really just dependent upon whether or not we will be reimbursed or not. Once we know that, we'll move forward.
We don't roughly, how many?
Currently, about 32. So 32, 33, I think. That was all that I've had. Does anyone else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, other business, we have a board of ed meeting right here on August 17th. And did you guys look at the board of ed meeting locations gathered for upcoming school year, the two different options?
Option two, okay. For people? I'm flexible either.
Me, I think.
So I was gonna leave it open to anyone else if they have any preferences, right? Two cents, option two is better, because we always seem to lose some people. Sure.
I agree.
I'm fine with that. Were you acting on that?
Just bad. No, just that, I'm just gonna post it. When you had a motion to go into closed session regarding the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismiss all those specific employees in the purchase or lease of real property?
Make a motion to go to closed.
Teyfling?
Yes.
Megan Michael?
Yes.
Kathy Nice?
Yes.
Jim Barrett?
Yes.
Jerry Harper?
Yes.
Tom McLean?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you all, you know, this is not, this is not an easy role. And I just want you to know that I appreciate all of you. I know all of you, I appreciate all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, it's time.
Diddle.
Thank you.
You can diddle, diddle.
But currently, you can't.